It's May sixteenth, six o'clock PM, six oh one PM. We called it order.
Recording in progress.
Meeting of the Select Board. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? Okay, seeing none, I will note for the record that participating in tonight's meeting are myself, Chair Liz Klein, Select Board Member Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. All right, first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. I make a motion to approve the minutes dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Liz? Aye, as well. Passes unanimously. Take another motion?
I move to approve the minutes dated May second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Myself, and aye, passes unanimously. All right, next on our agenda is the Mattie's Promise Day proclamation. Should we, do you think we should wait in case Anne comes? Okay, I'm gonna skip that in case we have Anne McCoy joining us. We'll give her a minute. There she is. All right, let's do the Grape Island Day proclamation and then we'll go back. So, we're just gonna discuss the proclamation for the Battle of Grape Island. And all residents are invited to celebrate the Battle of Grape Island this Sunday, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, from one PM to three PM at the bandstand in Hingham Harbor. So we'll read the proclamation at that event. But we do need to, to vote to proclaim Sunday, May twenty-first, as Grape Island Day in the Town of Hingham. Any discussion?
No, other than the event is memorable and I highly recommend townsfolk attend.
Excellent.
It's a great event, Sunday, I think it's at one to three at the harbor. Highly recommend it to anybody interested.
And you do not need to bring your own musket.
It's probably discouraged.
So I move to proclaim Sunday, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, as Grape Island Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Excellent, all right, we will go back to Mattie's Promise Day proclamation. This proclamation declares May twenty-third as Mattie's Promise Day in Hingham. And this day honors Mattie McCoy's life and her promise to help other children diagnose with rare cancers. So we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Town of Hingham proclamation, Mattie's Promise Day. Whereas Mattie's Promise is a nonprofit organization that was started in memory of Hingham resident Madeline Mattie McCoy in two thousand and nineteen. And whereas Mattie has used her courage, gentle spirit, and generosity to bring a smile to everyone she met. And whereas Mattie created art to sell to raise money for pediatric cancer while receiving treatment at Boston Children's Hospital.
And whereas Mattie has been an inspiration to all who met her and hear her courageous battle with, I'm not sure I can pronounce this. Rabdomyosarcoma, a rare and aggressive type of cancerous tumor of the soft tissue. And whereas Mattie has inspired the creation of nonprofit Mattie's Promise. And whereas Mattie's Promise seeks to help others forward with the goal of closing the funding gap of rare pediatric cancers.
Now therefore, we Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, as Mattie's Promise Day. And the Town of Hingham urge all citizens to observe this day by emulating the spirit and attitude of Mattie McCoy in being the change the world needs. Voted the sixteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. Signed Elizabeth F. Klein, Chair, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey.
Thank you.
Bill, do you wanna make the motion?
And therefore I would make a motion to proclaim Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, as Mattie's Promise Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Do you wanna add anything, Anne? Of course, thank you. And their Mattie's Promise Gala is Friday evening, I think there are still tickets available. If you'd like to join us, we'll be there.
You'll see Friday night, Anne.
Thank you, thanks for coming. You don't have to stay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for Springham to be held at Hingham Historical Museum on Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, from three PM to seven PM. Dino Fenari? Or is it Rich? Excellent, welcome, Rich. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about the event?
Sure, it's an event at the Hingham Heritage Museum. It's a family-friendly outdoor event. There's music, food, we'll be serving beer from our beer truck there. There's kids' craft tables, gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be a nice, nice museum, gives people a chance to check out the museum all the day too.
Excellent.
We'll be able to talk and we'll be serving beer or salsa and also beer.
Okay, excellent. I believe a police detail was, was requested. Do you know if that's been set up?
I have not heard, no.
Okay, do you know, Sharon?
It should be set up with this date before the event.
Okay. Okay, everything else looks in order, I'm very familiar with the event and I know there haven't been issues in the past, so I don't have any questions, Joe, do you?
I'll ask the question that I always ask for events that are scheduled outside, namely that there is no alternate rain date that's proposed here. So this is a one date and if, if you do need to reschedule, you'll have to come back for another license.
Correct, yes, there is no rain date others.
Yep, but no other questions, I've reviewed, the application looks complete, thank you.
Great, Bill?
So Rich, I went to the event last year, Vitamin C was so popular that you guys almost ran out of beer. And I think, I think Bridget had to call Dino to bring you some resupply, so, yeah, looking forward to seeing you. Looking forward, looking forward to seeing you there, it's a great event.
Excellent, any comments or questions from anybody in the public? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for Springham to be held at Hingham Heritage Museum on Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, from three PM to seven PM.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Thank you, Rich. Good luck with the event. All right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Saint John the Evangelist Parish for Summerfest two thousand and twenty-three to be held on Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with a rain date of Sunday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from four to seven.
Good evening, I'm Tom Piles, seven-two-seven Main Street, representing Saint John's Parish. This is our fourth or fifth annual, so most of you are familiar with the event. It's a year-end closeout of the program at Saint John's. We have a brief service and then we break out, seems like there's a lot of beer drinking here in Hingham. But we break out for music, kids' games, food, and yes, beer. And we have a wonderful turnout and it's hopefully a wonderful day.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions, Joe?
So the turnout of the expected one-twenty, does that seem?
Around that, yes. Depends on the rain or the sun.
Yes, no, I've got no other questions, good luck, thanks.
Excellent, Bill?
Tom, good to see you again, no questions.
And congratulations, Bill.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. No questions, familiar with the event, good luck.
Good.
Excellent, no questions.
Police detail has been ordered and is in place.
Yep.
Excellent, all right, I'm also familiar with the event and I don't think there have been issues in the past, so no concerns, I'm ready to take a motion.
So I'll move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Saint John the Evangelist Parish for Summerfest two thousand and twenty-three to be held on Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with a rain date of Sunday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from four PM to seven PM.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, did you have another one? Next on the agenda is to consider approval of three special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Stellwagen Beer Company for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Saturday, June twenty-second, from six to nine, August twenty-fourth, from five to eight, and August thirty-first, from five to eight. Hi, welcome.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
My name's Mike Snowdale here for Stellwagen. Yeah, so this is our third year doing beer gardens at the Weir River Sunset Picnics. I think it might say Saturday on the agenda, but they're all on Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
The twenty-second of June is a Thursday.
Okay.
It's just that there's, it's a Saturday.
Okay, got it, thank you.
But yeah, we, we bring our mobile beer trailer, serve draft beer. You know, it's a great event, there's music, the farm usually brings a food truck too. And I know a lot of other breweries participate on other Thursdays as well, so.
Okay.
You know, the tip certi, the pours that we bring, if it's not me, are all tip certified.
Okay.
And I do believe that they schedule a police detail as well.
Yes, okay. So yeah, so these are the sunset picnics that are held every Thursday and then these are the three dates that you'll be there.
Right.
Okay, got it, and I don't think they do rain dates.
They don't.
Okay, excellent, Joe, any questions?
Yeah, have there been any, any issues in prior years with this? I haven't heard any, I'm just asking.
We've never had an issue, no, they're always great.
Yep, no, I've heard only glowing reviews, so great, no questions.
Excellent, Bill?
How many people do you expect to kind of attend?
Kind of weather dependent, you know, on really nice weather days, I think anywhere from a hundred to two hundred might show up.
Great, thank you.
Any questions or comments in the public? All right, I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of three special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Stellwagen Beer Company for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, from six PM to nine PM, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, from five PM to eight PM, and August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, from five PM to eight PM.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, next on the agenda, the appointment of Assistant Harbor Masters. We have Ken Corson with us, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Ken, how you doing?
Good evening.
Do you wanna explain the, the process and who the potential candidates are?
Sure, the Harbor Masters Office consists of myself, the Harbor Master, and then we have a full-time head Assistant Harbor Master and then we consist of, from year to year, various numbers of Assistant Harbor Masters that are part-time, really like a seasonal employee. They work at my discretion when needed, doing various types of tasks at the harbor. Like I said, it can fluctuate in the numbers that we have and it's, it's limited to how many hours they work based upon the amount of funding we have in the line item budget. So if I have twenty or I have five, they only can work so much based upon the funding we have allocated. What I have before you is the reappointment of two individuals and there's three other individuals that are up for appointment, they've never worked as an Assistant Harbor Master before. The two reappointments have been here, this will be their fourth year. They have significant experience with this, with the Harbor Masters Division. They understand the boats, the operations, and they started out in the role of, two of these individuals, or at least all three of them to some degree, learning the boats, learning the operations. They start out doing pumpouts, mooring rentals, assisting boaters with tying up a town pier, basic, basic tasks. And then as they learn the operations and stuff, then they move up into some of the rescues and stuff like that. And then, then we have the highest level, which is myself, Joe, and some of the other assistants that are also police officers, where we can actually effect arrests and different things like that. So that's kind of the structure of the organization. And the two reappointments have already been here, they are kind of in the middle where they aren't police officers, but they have the ability to perform certain types of search and rescue operations, assist boaters. And then of the, of the new appointments, Cameron Lombard, Charlie Sickle, they're going to be essentially Harbor Attendants, like I said, doing the pumpouts and so forth. And then James Tean is also a special police officer with the town. So he'll be learning the operations of the department, but he, like I said, is a police officer, he'll have the ability, if necessary, to effect arrests and all the law enforcement capabilities.
Great, excellent, well, thank you. And the two reappointments are Bradford Betzner and Michael Nash?
That's correct.
Just so people know, the names, this is a public process, so the names are on the agenda.
Yes.
So, okay, excellent, are you expecting a busy season this year?
We are expecting a busy season, it's been a mild winter, as everyone knows, so a lot of people are ready to go, the harbor's starting to fill up early, so we do expect a busy season and it's gonna be a great boating season.
Excellent, excellent, so is this typically the, the number of Assistant Harbor Masters that you hire?
It varies from year to year, we had a couple assistants not returning this year.
Okay.
So we have these right now, there's the possibility, maybe in a few weeks for another one or two. Definitely probably seeing one more come along, but maybe two. So we might see a few more trying to replace some of the people that have left and then bring on a few, few other additional ones.
Okay.
Just to make sure we have the, the number of staff that we need.
Right, right, are you having trouble recruiting for these positions?
It's, it takes a little bit of time to find the right people because you need to have, really having local knowledge is important.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a lot of people that wanna do this type of work, but not being able to run a boat makes it, makes it challenging. So a lot of people are like, oh, I'd love to go on the boat, but
Right, sounds glamorous.
You need to have, you need to have the, the knowledge of operations and navigation and so forth. So it can be a little bit challenging.
Yes, for sure, okay, Joe, any questions?
I do, but first, this looks like a great lineup, I really appreciate your work in, in getting folks to be the assistants. Can I ask about Charlie? He's listed as being a Hingham High School junior, how old is he?
I believe he's sixteen or going on to seventeen.
And have you appointed a minor before to this role?
We have, we have, and we've discussed this with the chief, we have done this before. We take into consideration his, his vast experience at this young age with the ability to run boats. As you can see, he's got a commercial fishing license, he goes offshore fishing, so he has the skills we need to be able to run a boat, he will be supervised, he won't be out there just doing anything that he wants. It's, it's a, it's an Assistant Harbor Master position, but it's still slightly limited, that's why they're really a Harbor Attendant. So they won't be having the use of all the, the functions of an Assistant Harbor Master. It'll be tailored, narrowly tailored to what, what we need them to do. And we interviewed him, we've talked with him on numerous occasions, he was very interested last year. But I think this year, he's, he's ready for it, I think he'll work out well in this position.
I mean, reading his qualifications, it seems great. And I don't know the law on this, but do you need parental consent for hiring a minor in this role?
His parent, his parents are on board, so we do have parental consent.
And on board in more than one sense.
Yes, more than one sense.
I think, oh, in terms of the impact on the budget, does the number of Assistant Harbor Masters affect the budget? Or I think it's just the hours worked, so if you had fewer and they worked more, it'd be, be the same. So my understanding is it would not have an impact and that your plans for use of the Assistant Harbor Master is consistent with the current budget.
That's correct, so it won't have an effect on the budget. Actually, last year we were short-staffed and we actually have reserves of thirteen thousand roughly that we probably won't spend this year, so, so we need to bring the numbers up, but we'll only be spending what's within our budget.
Right, one other question, do you provide any sort of sunscreen or sun protection for the folks who are out there?
We, we do provide sunscreen.
Okay.
We have little packets in the office that they can bring out with them.
Cancer sneaks up in some unpleasant ways, so that's, that's great, okay.
So we do provide it, make it available anyways.
Okay, thank you, no other questions.
Bill?
The term that the Assistant Harbor Masters helped you, is it from Memorial Day to Labor Day or what's their? I mean, I know the appointment is for a term of years, but obviously they don't help you year-round, right?
Yeah, they're not really here year-round, there might be times, I mean, the boating season tends to get longer and longer for some reason, so it used to be, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day, but you know, now we're finding that we're still out there in October, sometimes even November, so it's not a regular, consistent basis, but we might have an event or we find that there's a hot, busy weekend in October and then we'll staff back up, so they'll go, they might be back out there then. Or we're, you know, we're getting going earlier in the season, getting boat maintenance done, that's something that they might help us with, getting bottom of the boats painted and stuff like that, so we'll be starting them up before Memorial Day to get things operational.
And who on your staff has law enforcement authority? Obviously yourself, your assistants?
Yeah, so it's, it's primarily, it's myself and Joe Driscoll, we're both the, the full-time staff. We do have some other part-time assistants. We have another assistant who is also a campus police officer at UMass Boston. And then we're appointing James Tean, who's also a special police officer here in town. So those are really the, the four right now that, that have full police authority on the waterfront.
Great, thank you.
If I can just follow up Bill's question about the term, I noticed that what we are appointing and reappointing for a term ending, but I don't see a commencement time, when, when would their terms commence?
That's a great question, I don't think I've been asked that. I think it would start when you make the appointment, so it would technically start probably today, you make the appointment, they'll get sworn in shortly after this, and then it would expire three years from.
Okay, that makes sense.
Unless you wanted to maybe set.
No, 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 I didn't know if your policy was it started, you know, June first or whatever the date would be.
No, there, I'm ready for them to start, so we can have it be effective as of this meeting, if that's fine with you.
Great.
Sure, okay, any questions or comments from the public? No, okay.
So Bill, I'll do the reappointments and then you do the appointments. So I move to reappoint Bradford Betzner and Michael Nash as part-time Assistant Harbor Masters for the Town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I make a motion to appoint Cameron Lombard, Charlie Cycle, and James Tean as part-time Assistant Harbor Masters for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor by rule call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's still up there.
You wanna stay up here?
Yes, I can stay up.
All right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Steamboat Wharf Marina Services Incorporated for Harbor Master Marine One Navigation Electronics Replacement. And again, we have Harbor Master Ken Corson and Kathy Riley with us. Who wants to start?
Well, I could tell you that the, we did a procurement, we solicited three quotes and Steamboat Marina, Steamboat Wharf Marina was the only company to respond. And I think it met all of the criteria that they were looking for in the specifications and so it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, excellent, and you're obviously happy with it, Ken, it meets all the requirements?
Yes, exactly it does.
Okay, can you just explain the timeline? If it will start immediately and is expected to be done by June thirtieth, is that right?
Yes, that's my intention is to work with them to set up the date that they'll have all the equipment. And then we'll bring the boat over to them, have them take out the old stuff, put in the new stuff and have it back in serviceable condition well before June thirtieth.
Okay, great, how long does that take, do you know?
The, the work should take about a week, depending upon how smooth it goes.
Okay.
And I anticipate that they'll be able to get the electronic equipment relatively quick.
Okay, all right, great, can you just explain how this is being funded?
Yes, so, pretty close to annually, we submit a, an application to Homeland Security Support Security Program requesting funds for various things that we're looking to accomplish in the Town of Hingham. We've funded boats, we've funded vehicles, and we fund our camera system, so there's different things we fund. This was, this is part of a refurbishment project for Marine One, which is, which was new in about two thousand and eleven. And some of the different parts of its operational equipment now are needing to be replaced. One of them is its radar, GPS, and different aspects of navigational equipment to flare for red on it. So part of that is to replace this. So three-quarters of it's being funded by Port Security Grant and the other twenty-five percent is capital outlay.
Okay, makes sense, and capital outlay for FY twenty-three or FY twenty-four?
FY twenty-three, so the funds are.
From last year, okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions, Joe?
Yeah, for Kathy, is this, I understand there was only one bid, but do you benchmark this so it comes within the realm of reasonableness? In terms of the pricing?
I think that it was very close to the estimate, I think we thought, we thought it was gonna be under fifty, but I think it's close enough given the, you know, it's fifty-two thousand.
And it may be in there, I just didn't see what the warranty was associated with this work. Anyone know?
I don't know what the warranty is off the top of my head for the, the electronics that come from the manufacturer. Obviously, we'll have some manufacturer type warranties working like performance under maritime law.
Yep.
Which we are constantly finding out apply here, which is a little bit different than the stuff that we traditionally.
Right, this is not UCC stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like us to, to try to put something in writing beforehand, we could certainly look into that, but from my experience with electronics and having a, a local person put, you know, do the installation and
Yep.
and having a relationship with them, we've never really had a problem. We're gonna be doing engine repairs and they'll probably end up being the company that will be doing that installation because they're really the only provider of that type of engine. So I anticipate a, a good working relationship, but if you'd like us to try to pursue some sort of amendment, we could do that, I guess.
I'm not necessarily looking for amendment, but I think it's good policy for the town as whatever it is that we're purchasing so that we sort of track what the warranties are so that when it comes time to do work, we don't automatically pay out, we first actually look at the sheet and say, ah, it's within warranty. Then, then make sure that we apply for the warranty payments.
Yeah, we also have the Homeland Security also participating in this, so I'll also go back and check and see if there might be some, there's a lot of, there's a lot of requirements
Yep.
that go along with that funding, so I can look into that and see if there's any.
And then after you make the purchase, do you need to report back to Homeland Security that this is how the funds were applied?
Yes, so we have lots of different types of reports, we have quarterly reports, biannual reports, so we will make those reports.
And I will just note for the record, your incredible ability to secure funding for a lot of what comes into the town on your watch, so we really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and it's not just myself, it's also Joe Driscoll from, from our office. He's, he does a lot of the reporting and managing of, of the numbers and stuff, so without him, I couldn't, couldn't do it either, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, how, how often do you have to replace the navigational equipment on the boat?
So this is the first time we've done it on this boat since we got it new in, in two thousand and eleven. They tend to get outdated, usually they get outdated before they start to fail, but we're actually starting to have some failure on radar and GPS, so, you know, this gets used quite a bit, we have it on every time we're underway, even in good visibility. You need to know what your surroundings look like, so it runs an awful lot during the boating season. You need to know what your surroundings look like, so it runs an awful lot during the boating season. So I think we've gotten an awful lot of use out of this, so I feel comfortable that it's time to replace it.
Great.
Okay, any comments or questions? Anyone with us? I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Steamboat Wharf Marina Services, Inc. for Harbor Master Marine One Navigation Electronics Replacement in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy's going to stay. Thank you, Ken.
Good luck with the start of boating season.
I know, there's lots of boats in the water already. All right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Mag Retail Holdings, FED LLC, doing business as McGovern Municipal HQ, for 2023 Ford Explorer Limited Hybrid Four-Wheel Drive Vehicle to be used by the fire department. We have Kathy, and I think we have Chief Murphy on the line?
I can.
Excellent, thank you. Do you want to start, Kathy?
Sure, I can just, the source of the procurement was through the Greater Boston Police Council contract that is managed by MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And so it, you know, was that simple that we can go to it, but the chief will tell you that he really lucked out in actually finding a vehicle on a lot in Massachusetts because they're significantly backed up in production to the tune of like a year and a half, two years. So, yeah, it's, so he was anxious to grab this one.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Do you want to add to that, Chief?
No, just that, you know, as Kathy said, it's very difficult out there. Another vehicle that we're replacing, our ship community vehicle under FY twenty-three, took us probably about six to eight months to find a vehicle for it. And then we ended up having to substitute for a different brand. So in this case, this is actually replacing my vehicle, and it's basically SUV. And the Ford Expedition is the only one that actually offers a hybrid version. And I know that the place that has access to that, we probably could have continued, my vehicle is kind of a Chevy Tahoe, but we wanted to try to go with the train, the police department on our end, switch to a hybrid. So, yeah, as Kathy said, when we kind of found that this dealership still has them and it's under stated, then we said, yes, what do we need to do to lock this in like right now?
Excellent, now I appreciate the urgency.
It's a fiscal twenty-four purchase, to be clear.
I saw that, so does that mean we won't pay until July?
We won't accept delivery or pay until after July first.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That was really my only question. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, does this vehicle have special equipment? Something unique for your use in the fire department?
Not as under this purchase. So we had kind of, there's a lot of different options when you're buying an admin vehicle like this. Occasionally, we can buy it through the company and they do the outfit on it and the lights and the radios and all that stuff. In this case, it was going to be more expensive to do it that route. So we had placed over a couple of different companies, and we, again, will select one of those, after like one, two, to do the work afterwards. So we'll take the vehicle from the dealership and then bring it to the outfitter afterwards.
Do you have an estimate for what the total cost will be once it's outfitted?
So the outfit with just the lights and then not including the purchase of the radios and all that stuff is coming in just over ten thousand. And then, once you buy the radios, those are a couple of more thousand. So we are budgeted for seventy thousand. And this, we won't have any problems staying within that budget. This price, this vehicle is actually cheaper than we had originally been quoted, so we're happy with that as well.
Yeah, so I'm seeing, you know, at the fifty-one thousand, if you even add it on twenty, you're still within your budget. Great, no other questions, thank you.
Great, Bill?
No questions.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Mag Retail Holdings, FED LLC, doing business as McGovern Municipal Headquarters for 2023 Ford Explorer Limited Hybrid Four-Wheel Drive Vehicle to be used by the fire department in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, three dollars.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
All right, Kathy.
Thank you, Chief.
We have one more. All right, next on the agenda, to consider approval of the agreement with T.L. Edwards Incorporated for roadway management work. And I think we have JR on the line. Hi, JR. I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Do you want to start?
Yes, this contract is, was procured under an agency, and it is the roadway management from all of the contracts, which steadily covers the majority of our, let's say, like seventy-five percent of our typical roadway construction. The contract is for four hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. And again, will primarily cover applying to and of all the selected votes that we're going to be working this year.
Okay, great, Kathy?
I will also, I'll add that T.L. Edwards has had a hard road management contract. They are an excellent contract, and they do very good work and provide a good product.
Excellent, you've cut out for a little bit. How many years have we worked with them?
We have worked with them for the last three years.
Three years, okay. Okay, and this, I'm assuming this four hundred fifty thousand is budgeted for?
It is.
Yes.
FY twenty-four?
FY twenty-four.
Yeah, FY twenty-four.
Well, is it starting now, JR? Does it start now?
I don't know if you can, can you hear?
We have funds of remaining from previous years as well. We're anticipating actual construction to begin late June at the earliest.
Okay, and I think I saw in terms of the timeline, well, what portion of it will be completed by December thirty-first? And then it looks like there's an option for an extension?
All of our, all of our work this year will be completed by October.
Okay.
And then, and in fact, all of T.L. Edwards' work should be completed by September.
Okay.
There is an option to renew, and we will see how things are going with procurement in the late fall, early spring, to see if we want to do our own procurement. I will say, while a significant component of the IFV or bid price for asphalt is directly related to the, to the price of oil generally, there was a very significant increase in cost between our last contract and this contract, and so we may be seeing if we can identify a more efficient way to deliver these services to the town.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to find, maybe you can point me where it actually says the specific services that are being provided. I know it's supposed to be in an exhibit or an attachment. I don't see it, so.
I'm sorry, I thought I provided it.
And you may have.
It's a laundry list, for real, like maybe three pages of different, yeah, I think that's.
Which one is, this year, okay.
Yeah, it's got several different components to it.
And so, I guess my question is, if this is a description of a type of work, what percentage of that work for the town is covered by this contract? So if it's asphalt work, this contract represents fifty percent of the asphalt work we'll need in town? I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Oh, okay, I think JR maybe?
JR?
So in terms of, yes, in terms of asphalt work, it probably represents ninety-five percent or more of our total asphalt purchase in any given year.
So the four fifty is basically pretty close, so it's not going to go more than five hundred totals to get everything done, is where I'm trying to, that's the number I'm looking for, since this is to partially complete it.
That's it.
Okay.
We wrote the contract for four fifty, but my anticipated cost for this work is actually four hundred thousand.
Got it, okay. And the scope of this contract is covering about ninety to ninety-five percent of all the work of this type that needs to be done in town? Is that a fair statement?
Unfortunately, I cut out just now and did not hear your question.
You know, all witnesses are trying to get out of answering questions, always say that. So am I correct that this contract covers approximately ninety-nine or ninety to ninety-five percent of the scope of all of this type of work that needs to be done in town for the year?
Not quite, the, because we also have a contract with Mast Haven Reclamation. They will be doing all of the road reclaiming that we're doing, as well as they do a lot of the sidewalk upgrades. When we redo a road that has a side look, we will often replace the sidewalk as well. Their contract should represent between twenty-five and thirty percent of the total work, so, but don't do deal in the asphalt side of it, if you know. They're doing prep work.
Got it, okay.
Replanting the road and recreating it to get it ready for the asphalt to come in. So the, there are three different pieces to this. T.L. Edwards handling a significant chunk, which represents in any given year, probably sixty percent of our roadway costs. Then.
JR?
Mast Haven Reclamation.
JR.
That represents about twenty-five to thirty percent.
JR, now, can you hear me?
I did.
Okay, good, so all I'm trying to accomplish is, we have a budget, and I'm just trying to understand what percent of the budget this represents, and if it's consistent with that same percentage of the scope of work that needs to be covered by that budget, that's all. So in other words, we don't want to be in a situation where we're spending eighty percent of the budget to do twenty percent of the work. So is this approximately, that's where I'm going?
Yes, this represents the appropriate amount of our annual budget to be applied towards this type of work.
Great, thank you. No other questions.
Bill?
JR, if you know, what was the cost last year with the roadway management work? About the same?
Last year, we had a larger budget because we were also utilizing grant funding at that time. We also had additional funds because we were unable to complete a contract within this that does our micro surface piece. So we, last year, we did a little over one million dollars in asphalt payment work. So this year, it'll be significantly reduced from that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with T.L. Edwards, Inc. for roadway management work in an amount not to exceed four hundred fifty thousand, for a term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, JR. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, JR.
All right, next on the agenda are appointments. Do we have any appointments for this evening?
Not.
No appointments.
Okay, next is public comment. Do we have any public that wishes to say anything? Okay, next on the agenda are town administrator and select board reports. Art, do you want to start us off?
Sure, I have two to share. First, today, we completed our latest American Red Cross blood drive at the senior center. I stand in evidence that it was a success, as I'm still speaking with everybody, having given my share. We had thirty-two registered, and I know we had several walk-ins. I don't have final numbers, but the Red Cross team is pretty pleased with another strong turnout.
Excellent.
I also want to mention an event that we shared through our Wellness Wednesday flyer, through our Health Department. It's an event taking place on Friday, the nineteenth of May, eight-thirty to eleven a.m. in San Born Hall or Auditorium here at Town Hall. It's a presentation by a gentleman named Jermaine Galloway, also known as The Tall Cop. He's listed as six feet, nine inches, so I guess that qualifies. He's actually a national law enforcement officer, he's a nationally recognized speaker, and he's here to, in Hingham, to share his advice and knowledge with parents and others in the community to understand how to address substance abuse. Some of the questions he'll be, he'll be ready to discuss are, what are the latest substances that are being abused? The extent to which they're available in town, and some strategies for family members and other supporters.
Excellent, thank you. Michelle?
Yep, I have one this evening. So in the next few weeks, we anticipate receiving over one point three million dollars in FEMA reimbursements, thanks to the hard work of Chief Murphy, Deputy LeChance, Chief Jones, and Deputy Chief O'Shea. These payments reimburse the town for police and fire overtime costs that were related to COVID back in calendar year 2020 and 2021. It's a really painstaking and terrible process to really, to go through all the paperwork and put this stuff together and get the payroll records there. So we appreciate the chief's efforts getting this, because it's a big sum for the town and it makes a difference. That's it.
Thank you. Bill?
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right, Joe?
Nothing either.
Okay, I just wanted to report that, I know we mentioned it last week, that Weir River Water System was getting an award, and they were presented with the award at the State House last week, and we were able to join the staff for a lovely luncheon to celebrate the great accomplishments that the Weir River Water System has made in such a short time, being recognized as a top municipal water system in the state. Also, just wanted to mention that Peace Officer Memorial Day was yesterday, and special thanks to Keith German, the Veterans Council, and Chief Jones for putting that meaningful ceremony together. And as we have mentioned before, it's talent bank application time. A reminder went out today. Applications are due June second. We are looking to schedule interviews the week of June fifth and June twelfth, and there is a list of vacancies on the website, so please check those out. Check out the boards and committees and certainly apply if you have interest. We'd love to have you. That's it. Any other questions or comments? All right, take a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Meeting adjourned.